Is that over there? I'd like to call the meeting of the Village of Campton Hills to order. It's January 7, 2025. Happy New Year to everybody. And it's 7 o'clock PM. Roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee McElvy?
Here.
Trustee Malletta is absent. Trustee Muncy?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Wunneke?
Present. Trustee Williams, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Sorry, Tracy.
Jim Piazza?
Good evening and happy new year to y'all. My name is Jim. I live in Foxfield, South Division, and I have two items I'd like to talk about. And hopefully, the board will take a closer look at resolving these issues, which my neighbors and myself are very concerned about. First, approximately a month ago, I spoke with Chief Lavand about a vehicle that was parked on the main thoroughfare for over a month, and it never had moved. We spoke, and I told the chief that cars come from Cheval de Sal, which is South Division, just to the west of Foxville. They keep, come flying around the curb, and it's, it's a tight curb. And where the car is parked, it's almost impossible for two vehicles to pass each other with this car parked there. Chief agreed 100%. The reason they did not go out to Anderson, go out to Anderson to access Cheval de Sal is because their roads are bumpy and need to be replaced. So they all come flying around through Foxville on our newly smooth paved roads, thanks to our past administration. I went out with the tape measure and measured from the car to the edge of the road, and it was exactly 16 feet wide. My truck is six and a half feet wide. Buses are even wider. So if two cars are passing each other, you have less than three feet to pass. But keep in mind that you need space for a parked car and on the incoming car without being forced off the road. It's a dangerous curve, and in warmer months, many people are out there walking. Some have strollers, kids are riding bikes. The person who owns the car has plenty of space for cars to be parked in their driveway. I am requesting a no parking ban on this main thoroughfare, 24/7/365, with the exception, if you're having a big family gathering, the cars pull on the grass at least a half the width of the car and possibly applying for a no cost permit for the one day. In my opinion, it's a safety issue. So, board members, please take a closer look at this, and please do not put it at the bottom of the pile. My second issue is horses, okay? It took nine years to sort out the horse chicken issue. Within a matter of months, that has changed. So now, the residents think it's okay to do whatever they like. Just this past Sunday, my neighbor texted me and asked if I know who was riding horses down our street. There were three riders and a white truck following them. She told me there was a pile of horse poop directly in front of her driveway in her mailbox. I told her I would check it out, because she lives alone. Her husband is in nursing home. I told her, do not pick it up. She should not have to clean up after other people's horse poop. So first, I called the Campton Hills Police Department to see if there was an ordinance about picking up after themselves. Do not remember what the officer's name was, only that he had only been there a few months, and he would check into it and call me back. Later, he called that day and called me and told me that he would not, did not find any ordinances that horse owners have to pick up after themselves. My response was, really? That's not right. So my neighbor posted on what's happening in Campton Hills, which we all know that this is a reliable source, media source. Pardon my sarcasm, just to see if this person would come forward and come back and clean it up. The only responses she got were snide, rude, lambasted comments. One comment was, sweet Jesus, please tell us that someone's not that ridiculous. Dear God, I wish my life was so incredibly empty that I had nothing better to do with my interests or time than worry about some poop on the side of their lawn. Although, I've never wished to be that petty. Sunshine stark. Another person posted, hey lady, if you don't like it, move back to the concrete city. My neighbor was so upset, she had to take the post down. I'm sure the last few comments will be edited and taken down by the administrator. What happened to the common courtesy and human compassion of just being nivally and doing the right thing? After doing some detective work, I found out that the owner of Burberry Gates Farm on Anderson 64 told me it was a family that boarded their horses was responsible for not picking up the horse poop. After a few texts, he assured me they would, they would contact them and come clean it up. And sure enough, they did that tonight. Much praise to Burberry Gates Farm. I spoke to a friend about this, and he said that he believes there's an ordinance about blowing your grass clippings on the road and leaving them there. Shouldn't that be the same for horse poop? It's called littering. So in closing, I'd like to say, our neighbors would like to see a Campton Hills ordinance saying horse owners have to pick up their horse poop or receive a fine, the same as a dog owner who, in my neighborhood, 99, 9 tenths of the people pick up after their dogs. By the way, my neighbor in the back has two horses, which I love feeding and spending time with. It's not that I don't like horses. It's the owners who are disrespectful by not picking up their, their horse's poop. I've been out there 38 years, and this is the first time this has happened, and hopefully, it's not a reoccurring thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, no others, good. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Any removals from the consent agenda? Janet?
I'd remove items B and F.
B and F. Any others?
Item A, please.
A?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any others? Okay, motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of 4A, 4B, and 4F.
So moved.
Moved by Janet, second by?
Is it possible, could we backpedal one second and remove one other item? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Thank you. Could we also remove 4E, please?
4E. Okay, so I will repeat now. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 4A, 4B, 4E, and 4F.
So moved.
Moved by Janet, second by Jim. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so a motion to move 4A for discussion?
So move 4A.
Moved by Ed Muncy, second by?
Second.
Second by Janet Burson?
The only discussion is, I wasn't able to make the meeting, so I would like to be able to abstain from the vote. That's it.
Oh, okay. All righty. Okay. Roll call on that one?
Trustee Muncy?
Abstain.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Malletta is absent. Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, 4B, motion to approve payment of bills per warrant list 25-16. I need a motion. Moved by Janet?
No, excuse me.
Discussion, I'm sorry, discussion.
I noticed a couple of items, already brought them to the attention of Administrator Rooney, that appear to be credits but are not booked as such under the Amazon business account. One for $85.75, and another one for $269.63. So I would move that we pass the warrants, the exception of those two items.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Botner. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Good, good catch on that one. Okay, we'll move on to 4E, motion to advise and consent to the village president's appointment of James Brown, Building and Zoning Officer, as Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And that was me, and in fact, I acted a little too quickly. It wasn't 4E that I wanted to talk about. It was down in the action items, so I don't have anything to discuss. We can move that forward.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion to move 4E forward.
So moved.
Moved by Janet, second by Tom. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And 4F, motion to advise and consent to the village president's appointment of trustee Ed Muncy as liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, discussion?
How's going to make a motion to approve?
Okay, a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Tom. All right, any discussion? No? All right, roll call. All right, roll call.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Muncy?
Abstain.
Two As, two Nays. Yes, President Wunneke?
Yes, I vote yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, on to staff reports. 5A, Ad-Hoc Technology Committee, and Kim will give us a presentation and about all the accomplishments our new committee has made.
Yes, we, you got a nice, long, one-page full report for me.
That's, that's good.
So everybody got that. So you know, we have some very intelligent and very committed volunteers on that committee. Not everybody has public service or public sector, but it's technology, and of course, I'm the one that brings that public sector to the table. But, so we didn't reach the ma, the original mandate, which was to decide on whether or not to upgrade the server or not, which is item five. We did do that. That is underway. Helping Hands will be putting that in. The other thing we did, we took care of the, the main facing attack vector that the village has, which is the M365, getting it on the FedRAMP and the government licenses so that we could get some of that extra things that CSUB wants us to do. And that there's a handful of things CSUB wants us to do, which is part of Homeland Security, by the way, if you didn't know. The other thing, we managed to improve communication with Helping Hands IT. I personally had some personal one-on-ones with the Vice President, helped them understand that this is a municipality, and even more important, it's a police department. So they now have an understanding that things, when things are needed and when they need to do stuff, that they need to schedule it and just not walk in and start taking things offline. So, we also, I, I had the committee approve and brought up the idea of having the Vice President sit in on our meetings as our de facto CIO. So he participates in our meetings as well. And I have him give us reports as well. The other thing that we did, we did a lot of additional support for village administration. Whenever Helping Hands would come and say, we need to update this, or this up, is this due? And I would get a call, and we'd either talk about it, or if it was something pretty simple, like a couple UPSs for a couple key pieces of equipment, it was like, it, just get it, you know? Again, number four on that list, the high availability of the firewall and the secondary internet circuit. So that's if we lose our primary circuit, that it can go and fail over, and then you still have phones. The police department can still work. Okay. Of course, the update, and let's see. Accomplished getting the relationship with CSO, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, and it is, again, part of Homeland Security. Their services are free of charge for any public sector. They will do work for private, but they, you know, usually in, you know, maybe like infrastructure-type places, like utilities and things. But they are now doing a proactive scan of our border, our ingress, and checking for vulnerabilities weekly. Okay, there's a couple other things that we can do with them. So we look forward to actually initializing those as well. The other thing, too, we secured one of our members. Member Peskey, Paskey actually donated a secure cabinet for downstairs for the equipment. So we just have to work on doing that, because that changing over will require an outage. But, I mean, we pretty much, I bet it's accomplished more than I think that we started out for. We also like to make the recommendation, and I notice it's on for discussion, that the Technology Committee continues. Because technology needs still happen. They change. And just having that additional support, because the village can't afford to have an IT person on staff. So, I mean, is there any, I mean, we look forward to continuing that support going forward. So, any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Kim?
And Kim, I just, not a really question, but if you elaborate on the next steps you were taking in looking at changing the village webpage and some of the services we could do there versus some of the in-house activities. You, you did a deep dive on.
Yeah.
Trying to weigh the pros and cons of expenditure money that would affect, if you'd go into that.
Yeah, so there's a couple things with some of the municipal software that uses. Some of it's currently on, is on, in, in premise on, on the server. That particular company that does that does have a hosted solution, believe it or not, that is actually just under $1,000 cheaper, and you get six users out of it. So that might be worth looking at. There's some other things that we could do, too, with that particular municipal software, where they have modules that might keep us away from needing to spend money and keeping our own data, our own data, instead of using SafeBuild. The committee is concerned about ownership of that. So that might be something that we would bring up in a later report after we discuss it more. Some of the other things was, there's another additional component that can be put on that could eliminate an update and connect instead of having the website that we have now. So, and there's, there's a whole host of other stuff, too, that's little and easy, low-hanging fruit that we could probably do with no money. And then there's also grants that can be had.
Well, that's good. Go ahead, Janet.
I just had a question about the, what it sounds like is a web hosting solution that you were referring to. So are we talking about Civic Systems versus, oh, Civic Plus in this case, right? Civic Plus is an alternative to the local WordPress designer that we're calling. Is that correct?
Yes, and you can, you can piece that and get the, still get your online payments and put your minutes there and everything else. It's more like a content management system at that point.
Right. And when it comes to payments, which is not a, not a big online thing for us today, and then you mentioned subsequently the SafeBuild project, were you referring to payment processing in-house versus via SafeBuild?
Yes. And, and it's within the village's right to actually charge the credit card fees on, in addition to that. Most, most folks do. I mean, look at the Secretary of State.
Let me, not a, a surcharge on the, on the credit card?
Well, they'd be paying the processing fee instead of the village paying for it.
But SafeBuild would still be the ones that are?
Yeah.
SafeBuild be the ones receiving the money for these permits? Or would the village and?
No, I'd leave the zoning stuff completely in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sounds like a good idea. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you so much for all of this, Kim. At the end, you kind of touched on grants, and that's super interesting. So, you know, we're going to be putting together and talking about the budget for next year. It would be great to be able to target and know if any of these grants, we're going to need a contribution from the village, so we can kind of account for that next year.
Yeah, some of them don't actually, but, but we do need a plan. You can't go into them without a plan, usually. But there's plenty.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like for us, I mean, that's really high up on the list. I mean, if we can target grants and as many as possible, I mean, the police department is just banging them out left and right right now. I mean, it's going to be a huge impact for the village. We're going to be able to do so much more if we can get some grant money. So that's really exciting.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we can hear more about those in the future.
Yeah, when I get a little bit of time, I'll start combing through them.
Yeah, yeah, I know you've been busy. I can tell. There's a lot on here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, I, I think that's any other questions? Good, thank you, Kim. Good report.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is anybody on the Technology Committee a grant writer? That, or have they ever done grants before?
I'm probably the only one that's written grants, and that was with just the St. Charles Education Foundation, which isn't hard to write for. You just come in there with a good idea that gets their eyes lit up, and they'll say, oh, here, here's your money.
Yeah. Go ahead, Janet.
My understanding from the CSO presentation IML this past year is that a number of the smaller grants that are available for things like cybersecurity training for your staff, anti-phishing training and things like that, these grants are undersubscribed, so to speak, right? And so they are, they are available just for the asking. It doesn't, it's basically a form to fill out, and it doesn't require a creative description of the, of the need or how the grant is going to fill the need or any of the things that might be the case with other more complex grants. These are, some of them at least through CSO, are pretty simple, I think.
Yeah, low-hanging fruit, I like to call them, and ones that you can probably get easier than having the master plan.
Good. Yeah, perfect. Let's go for it. That'd be great. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to police, police report, and that'll be Chief James Lavand.
Thank you. We're back on our normal schedule for your monthly police department reports, which was given out always at the second board meeting. So the next meeting, you'll get the police department monthly report for December. We recently had our first winter weather event parking, our ordinance going to effect a few weeks ago. I posted a chief's message onto community accounts that went out to the residents and that. Our community is unique in a good way, is that a lot of towns have the two-inch snow parking ban, and people are used to that. We don't. Ours is a winter weather event, which includes snow and ice. So I want to take the chance here, the opportunity, to remind residents, because I received a few comments and questions from a few people that got citations that weren't happy with it. So I addressed that in my chief's message. But again, this applies to ice and snow. Ice is more dangerous than snow. So it's important, we have small roadways. Campton Township Highway Department has trucks that are 12 feet wide, 30 feet long, and weigh 30,000 pounds. That is extremely hard for them to get through these subdivisions when vehicles park on the street. Bigger problem is the safety aspect of it. Children love to go outside and play in the snow. So what is a plow driver supposed to do when he's plowing a road, and it's snowing, and a child darts out into the street from behind a parked car that's illegally parked on the street? It's a big tragedy that is waiting to happen. So some of my comments that were directed at me in our enforcement efforts, I take with a grain of salt, because no one likes citations. However, compare the Village of Campton Hills to other communities, and if anyone suggests that this is done as a revenue generator, it couldn't be farther from the truth. Your citation is $25. $25. That does not align with any other municipalities that charge $100 or greater and tow your vehicles. So I say we're pretty kind. My other big comment that I received is, why do my officers not knock on their doors and ask them to move their car? Number one, that's not our responsibility. There's weather out there. You can watch the weather. You can determine when a winter weather event is coming. Now, I also said in there that anyone can contact me at any time. If your car was broke down, there was extreme circumstances, I will always work with a resident. Like, a $25 citation is nothing. We seek compliance. That's all we seek on it. So I wanted to address it tonight, even though I addressed it already in community accounts. And most residents are good with it. Some said, why don't we advertise it? We advertised this three months in advance. We talk about it at board meetings. We put it on community accounts. We put it on the village websites. Not to mention, we have permanently mounted signs in subdivisions that stay up year-round, telling you exactly what the ordinance is. So the village is pretty kind when it comes to it. So I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that I received from a few citations out there. Most residents are good, and they understand it, and accidents happen. But it's a safety issue. That's why we have that ordinance. All right, so we'll go past that. We completed active shooter training this Friday at Bel Graham School. It's extremely important training. We do it every year. We rotate between Wasco and Bel Graham. It's good for our officers, but it's also assurance for the students and the staff that are in the schools. If a tragedy does ever happen, which we hope it doesn't, that the officers are prepared and know what to do. So we completed that this past Friday. It was great. I am currently working on, with the assistance of Christina, the police department's 2024 report, which is pretty extensive. She's been a huge help with that. So hopefully, I'll have that done this January. That will be able to go out to the board and that. Thursday, January 9th is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I'd like to thank every member of the department, their dedication, their hard work. They truly do, do love this community. Many of them live in this community. So I try to recognize them all the time, just not on certain days, because they do a great job. But on this Thursday, we are going to have a lunch for them. So if anyone is interested in coming, it's going to be around 11 o'clock here at Village Hall. I understand everyone has busy schedules, but I just wanted to put it out there to the board. Over the last year, I have updated the police department section of the website. It's pretty impressive for what our website is. Like, it was extremely outdated. It was old. It was pretty bad, to be honest with you. But I have to give credit to Clerk Johnson over there, because I keep dumping all these updates to her, and it's not me putting it into the system. It's her doing it on the website. It is a lot of work. So like, the police department section of the website has improved greatly. So, but that is with Clerk Johnson doing the work. It's easy for me to just to keep feeding her, and I know every time she sees my emails, she hates it, but she keeps doing it, and she says, you're welcome. So I appreciate that. Over the last two weeks, police department's seen, seen an increase in package thefts. This is pretty common around Christmas time. A lot of porch pirates out there. So what makes it harder now is before, you used to have an Amazon truck that showed up at your house. It said, Amazon, everyone knew who they were. They use subcontractors now that work around the clock. I don't, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, you wake up, your package is outside your door. We had a lot of package thefts. So people are smart now that they realize they throw on a reflective vest, they pull up in a car, they walk up to the door. After Amazon did deliver your packages, they take your packages away. So we had a lot of those. So I just ask residents, when you get a chance, your packages are delivered. If you can, take them in as soon as possible. That would help us out greatly, because it's hard for the police department to determine who Amazon is and who Amazon isn't, and it's porch pirates taking your stuff. So, just one quick last thing. Trustee Botner brought it up. Want to give a little credit to Christina. Me and Christina went, I think now, two, three months ago, to grant writing training for a couple days. It was amazing. Christina has worked around the clock on grants. We have like five active ones going now, some for substantial amounts of money, some for smaller amounts. I know it's going to be a huge asset for the Police Department and the Department, or Village in general, but Christina is here not only helping me out, but helping the administrative side, too. So, the question was asked, do we have people that can write grants? She's spent a lot of time in this. She's getting really good at this. So, if it doesn't have to be a Police Department grant, it could be a village grant, she would be more happy, more than happy to help you guys do a grant. So, if it comes up, she's there. She's the resource. I think that is it.
That's it. Any comments or questions for Chief? Yeah, Nick, go ahead.
Chief, I just wanted to, when you were telling me about the grants and how actively you're pursuing those right now, one other thing you touched on, which I think was really important, was that you're also kind of putting together a replicatable process. You know, that that's also on the agenda, so that, you know, future officers, future departments are going to have a resource that they can go to, so that they continue to go after and reach out for these grants. I mean, you guys have put all this training, and you're putting all this together. We're going to have this tangible asset now that we can, we can, we can give to the next, you know, officers. When you guys are retired and move on, we'll have that here at the department. So, I just wanted to pat on the back and, you know, talk about that a little bit.
No, I appreciate it. So, it's like trial and error, like anything else. You put it, well, here's one thing I didn't know about grant writing. If you apply for a grant, and you're denied a grant, there's always a governing body or board that is reviewing these grants and determining who's eligible or not. If they deny you of that grant, you send them a letter, and they have to then respond back to you with pretty much what your good points were, what your bad points were, and why you didn't get that grant. So, that is huge for us. So, we send off a grant, and let's say we don't get the grant this time. They reply back, they say, here, if you would improve this and this, your chances dramatically go up that next time around you get a grant. So, as Trustee Botner said, we're pretty much making the template right now. Like, we're not reinventing it. We're tweaking it and making it better. So, once we get it to where we need it to be, where we think it's pretty much perfect, that's the template the village is going to use going forward. It's going to make it much easier for anyone. It's literally changing around numbers, maybe what it's for, but the template is going to be there, and it'll be a huge asset way down the road. And yes, way after I am retired, it'll still be there.
All right. Well, Chief, we just want to thank you for your leadership as well, and I think we have one of the most outstanding police departments. We have, they're great guys, and gals, and gals, yeah. Exactly. All right. Any other comments or questions? Good. We'll move on.
Can I just say something about the finance report?
Sure.
Treasury, Treasurer.
Nick Phillips.
Pushed the button wrong. McPhillips will be here next meeting. I just wanted to state, we're online with revenue and budgeted expenses, except one area in the police personnel cost, because we've already got a full-year cost for dispatch and uniforms and allowances of new officers, and some personnel issues that are ongoing that are going to be rectified shortly, I believe. So, that'll get righted. And then, the audit field work has been completed, and we are waiting the audit firm's management review, and then having that with the Finance Committee, and we'll have the audit firm give a report to the board either, probably at this stage, because we want to talk to the Finance Committee first and get their view. It'll be the first meeting in February, hopefully, that we'll have that, and then that'll tie right into the budget discussions that will begin.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving along. Action Item 6A, Motion to Approve Resolution 25-01, Authorizing Execution of an Employee Leasing Agreement with MGT Impact Solutions LLC for Building and Zoning Officer James Brown.
So moved, Muncie. Second.
Moved by Muncie. Second by?
Second.
Second by Janet. Any discussion?
And this is the same firm. It's just been bought out by a bigger firm in Florida, but Gov HR is still the underlying local management of that bigger firm that we're now contracting with.
And we're keeping James Brown on?
Still Jim Brown.
Okay. Okay. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Nick.
Yeah, kind of a question, comment, kind of curiosity. So, I want if we could just clarify if the building and zoning officer is a permanent fixture? I mean, if that is something that we're doing on a temporary basis? Because my question is, kind of on the back end, I would have hoped that we would have had a discussion, you know, maybe two months ago, you know, if this is going to be a permanent fixture, and looked for a permanent solution versus the 10. Because when I, this caught my eye, hopped on ZipRecruiter, and in this area, you know, all the jobs, they're $47,000 to $69,000 a year are what the, are what municipalities are offering right now for a full-time zoning officer. So, I'm just kind of curious. I think we're at the spot right now where we need it, you know? We have to pay the $101 an hour, but rather than getting this again on the agenda, should we talk about having a permanent solution? I mean, what's?
Well, I think at the budget discussion, we'll definitely show a discussion, do you want to stay with the contract employee for this position, or hire it as a full-time employee of the village with all the benefits? And that the downside of ZipRecruiter doesn't show the 30% uptick of a municipal employee with IMRF and health insurance primarily. So, it's not, that range has to be increased by about 25, 30%, if you have a full-time employee. And then, we do it based on the fact that we probably get a day and a half worth of hours, generally. We've had more this year because of the zoning ordinance update and the comp plan review, but once that's finished, and we think it will be fairly soon by the time we do the budget, I think you'll have a issue for the board to decide whether you want us to have a full-time employee or stay with the contract.
Okay, Janet, go ahead.
My understanding is that by Village Code, we're required to have a building and zoning officer, although there wasn't one under the prior administration. But I think that Trustee Botner brings up a good question, good issue, in terms of how that position is staffed, and I took it that there was an unusually large amount of work related to the zoning ordinance. That was one of the reasons that Mr. Brown was brought in, and that, so we, I felt that perhaps we were a little backed up, maybe both in process and decision-making in this area, and so, for me, if it takes us a couple of months to work through that, I think it's okay, but it is a good question as to what, you know, what is the ongoing expectation for the amount of time that we would expect from a building and zoning officer, whether they were an employee, or whether they were, you know, contracted staff? I rather doubt that it's 40 hours a week. So, whatever that number is, I think that is a good number to talk about when we get to the Finance Committee and the budget discussion, and whether or not this is going to be a position that we staff going forward, or whether it's a position that we hire for.
Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Winkie. I would echo the similar comment, that we had this discussion at the beginning of this process, that it was very clear, we were going to spend a lot less money through this way, and also not hiring somebody permanently, not paying the benefits, everything else. And we didn't have enough work for somebody to do that. I think during the budget process, it's a nice time to reiterate that, go through that process again for our future expectations, and make sure that's still the same way to go. But that's why we did it this way in the past. It was a deliberate decision. I think it was the right decision. We'll just make sure that it continues to be.
Good. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Muncie.
Aye.
Trustee Burson.
Aye.
Trustee Botner.
Aye.
Trustee McElvy.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving along to item, action item 6B, Motion to Approve Ordinance 24-13, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 1 of Title 4 of the Village Code of Campton Hills, King County, Illinois, Establishing the Number of Available Liquor Licenses.
So moved, Muncie.
Moved by Muncie. Second by Williams. And discussion or questions? This liquor license will be for the village squire, I believe?
Yes, for gaming.
Correct? For the new restaurant that, the former lodge on 64. So, roll call.
Trustee Muncie.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Botner.
Aye.
Trustee Burson.
Aye.
Trustee McElvy.
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. Okay, action item 6C, Discussion and Motion to Approve Statement of Censure. I want to say a little bit about this first. I've been in public service for 26 years. I want to thank the public for always believing in me. I served on the county board for 24 years, two years on the Campton Township. But in all those years, on county board, I served with 24 board members, and it was a partisan board, so you can figure the Republicans and the Democrats all had different ideas, but we always agreed to disagree. We never had any arguments. We never had anybody berate staff or other county board members. And so, this is really the reason I feel that we do need a motion to approve a statement of censure, and I'll accept a motion on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, but I'd like to kind of read, kind of have a comment first, if I may.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
I'll get my microphone on. I want to take a step back, if we can, as a board. If you go back to May 7th of last year, this board had a meeting, and at that meeting, I know I brought it up and some other trustees. I think Trustee Williams, I don't think you were on the board back then, but everybody else was, and there was concern about breaking confidence of closed sessions, of conversations taking place outside this building with information that was in confidence, getting out to various folks, whether it be in businesses, whether it be within litigation, et cetera. So, we, there was a large concern. I think at that point, I raised, in the past, there was a censure at one time of a prior village president. I also asked at that meeting if we could at least agree, as colleagues, as board members, to A, obviously get along to your point, Madam President, but also, secondly, to make sure that we all try to fly right, which means when you have a closed session, it stays in closed session. When you have a conversation in confidence with somebody, it stays in confidence. And I asked for a consensus on that. So, was there a vote? No, there was no vote, but we went around, and everybody nodded their head in agreement that if that behavior would continue by any trustee, that censure would be on the table. And so, with that, that's kind of how we got to where we are today, because the behavior has continued. So, I'd like to read into the record a statement of censure for trustee Janet Burson. Dear trustee Burson, while you've approached your elected position of village trustee with passion and commitment in the last two years, you've also created new potential liabilities, expenditures, and compliance issues for our village. You've been counseled against this conduct numerous times by the village president, village attorneys, and village board members, yet the conduct continues to persist. As such, we are in the unfortunate position of having no other recourse but to document that you have continued engaging in certain actions against the specific guidance of the village president, village administrator, and the village board members. Specifically, you've admitted to various individuals that you've communicated directly or through others with parties that were engaged in legal disputes with the village. These actions consist of leaking confidential information, including information discussed in village board closed sessions to outside parties either directly or through others in violation of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. This is an abuse of entrusted power by a public official attempting to use their position. The violations reached the point where the village board had to take part in additional training to address the roles and responsibilities of each board member, and how to properly respect the sanctity of the village board's closed sessions. Despite this, your actions continued. Recently, you have acted abusively toward appointed officials of the village, questioning their integrity, and threatening their appointed positions because of your disagreements with certain issues that you have been discussed and voted on by the village board. Your actions have created a hostile environment with these officials, whom you've offended and taunted with your comments. We are not attempting to limit your ability to achieve what you seek through your office, but we will not allow a member of the corporate authorities of the Village of Campton Hills to engage in conduct which raises new potential liabilities, expenditures, and compliance issues for our village. It is for this reason that the members of the board hereby censure you as a result of your actions. It is our sincere desire to end any such conduct. Proceed from this point forward in a positive and productive direction, and we hope and look forward to doing so with you as a valued and respected colleague. However, your continued actions require us to take this step to censure you. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to censure trustee Janet Burson.
Do I have a second? Second, Tom Williams. And now, discussion. Go ahead.
You've made multiple statements that are categorically untrue, trustee McElvy. You have made allegations going back to May 7th and continuing to today related to violations of closed-session confidence, which I deny. I would also remind you that we learned, again, this past year at IML, that there is no statute regarding the confidence of closed session. There is no Village Code provision regarding the confidence of closed session, and that village boards are prohibited from censuring members for alleged violations of closed-session confidence. This was made very clear to us at the conference. So, firstly, I deny this contention, and secondly, were it true, it is not an action subject to censure by a municipal board in the state of Illinois. Secondly, as it relates to what I may or may not say to other members of the board, I think I can say what I want, and I don't think that you or any combination of members of the board are in a position to tell me what I can and can't say. And in particular, there are no possible restrictions over what I can say politically outside of this room, and I know there have been some concerns about that. You know, this has been an ongoing battle that seems really rather personal to me. At a special meeting of the board on 11/14, a series of allegations were made against me. I was repeatedly challenged in the midst of a policy debate for using inflammatory language. I believe the repeated groundless accusations against me were the actual inflammatory and non-constructive actions engaged in during that meeting. In one case, I used identical language in a similar context to another trustee, yet I was scolded for using, again, quote, inflammatory language. Materials were circulated that misrepresented my activities as a certific myofascial and triggerpoint therapist, under the guise of a conflict related to zoning restrictions against massage therapy. Some believe that I should have recused myself from a vote that included restrictions on this profession. It's very unfortunate that other professionals licensed by the state of Illinois are unable to practice in Campton Hills due to this personal attack. Yet, if some aspect of our zoning ordinance might touch, or you were relate to you in some way, none of us would have been able to cast a vote, would we? In various discussions about edge cases between, say, RE 2 and RE 3 lots, should those with either classification have recused themselves? No. What if you were an animal owner? Trucks with CRD plates? Policy disagreements, no matter how strong our fair game in our meetings, personal attacks and petty political theater such as this are not. Personal disappointments expressed privately are just that. Political statements outside our meetings are also not fair game for censure. The right to political speech is not obviated by our services trustees. The Village of Campton Hills states that its village board meetings, our code states, that Robert's Rules of Ordinance shall govern. Out of several variations, I could not find one that used the word inflammatory. Rather, most versions included language similar to this. In debate, the officers of the assembly should always be referred to by their official titles. It is not allowable to arraign the motives of a member, but the nature or consequences of a measure may be condemned in strong terms. It is not the man, but the measure that is the subject of debate. Does not matter how strong the language is, or what sentiments it is intended to arouse. The essence of Robert's Rules provisions on decorum relates to the personalization of the remarks. The regular practice of impugning me, my motives, and my general way of doing things are all out of bounds for public debate under Robert's rules. I encourage my fellow board members to return to our prior practice of considered debate, rather than searching for new and different ways to mount personal political attacks with nearly every meeting. I will not be bullied out of a position to which I was elected by our residents with a nearly 2 to 1 majority, and I will continue to do my work here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Janet, I admire the fact that you come to these I just wanted to say, Janet, I admire the fact that you come to these meetings extensively prepared. You're passionate, and outside of the meetings, I've never seen you back down. I truly admire that. While it may be intimidating, and folks may not like being on the other end of the argument with you, I do not see censure as the right tool to battle you in a public forum like this. In addition, the one thing that did stand out that you said, Jim, was talking about liabilities and expenses that Janet could be creating for the village by sharing private information from these meetings and, in a sense, advising folks that we may be in the middle of litigation with. And, and that's, I, I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, where did we hear that? Who said this? I mean, we're in public forum accusing trustee Burson of these things. And, I mean, is it just a thought? I mean, is it just what we, you believe? Because it's a pretty significant accusation, and I have no idea, but I personally would have, you know, sat down with Janet and discussed this. I, I do feel like this is political bullying, and I would not support this at all.
Go ahead, Tom.
As for what was going on at the closed meetings before I was here, I, I have no opinion because I wasn't here. Now, when I took the job of trustee, I was told not to speak about the things that were in closed meetings, and I took that as my word. My word means something. I don't care if there's a law behind it or not. So I said I wouldn't, and I don't. So I almost pretty much forget everything we talk about in closed meetings after I leave here because I feel like it's that important. They're closed meetings for a reason, and I just feel like it's an important step. I mean, I don't have to have a law to do things right. I'm sorry. Number two, so I can't, and I can't speak to specifics on it because I wasn't there for that. As for the code thing, you know, the whole voting on the, and I was for the massage thing in the first place because I do go get massages at a ladies' house in South Elgin. It's not like, you know, if I, I guess if I was like fundamentally breaking the code openly, which I'm not saying you were, because you said you weren't massaging, and I'll take your word for it. It was a website that really, that's the reason I stepped out. I was like, hey, I gotta get out of this because I can't look like I'm doing something for another trustee. It wouldn't matter if it was Ed, it wouldn't matter if it was Jim, you, it doesn't matter. I'm not gonna let this job taint my vote for someone. No one's gonna, I mean, so I just don't want to give that feeling. If someone actually offered the massage thing to me now, later, I probably would vote for it as long as you were out of it, not voting for it. Because I just feel like you left the website open. It looked bad. It was a bad look. It was bad optics at best, okay? So that's the only reason I went that way. So it's different than somebody saying, you know, can we, can't, I can't vote for B trucks, or no. You were literally looking like you were doing something wrong, and that's wrong. I mean, these two things, I mean, I hate to say it, but it is a conscience thing, and it bothers my conscience, so, personally. But, and then the last thing would be, as for things outside of meetings, I never really had you say anything in a meeting that bothered me. I mean, you never did. I, I mean, there's a lot of times you walked up to me, you know, like people took things personally. I'm like, yeah, I know, it's crazy, whatever. I agree with you there to a point. I'm just going based on some of the things that happened outside of meetings. And that's where I think it got a little bit out of control. I think some of the people that worked for the staff of the village, you know, it's, it's, I've learned about villages, it's not easy. It's really tough. But I think if we could have as much decorum outside with the people that work for the village, I mean, there's no reason for me to jump down Tracy's throat or anybody else's about anything. Because really, what we're deciding here, I mean, the biggest thing I did on this board was decide how many chickens people can have. It's not worth having a big stroke about. I really don't see it. So that, that's where I'm at on this. And then the other fact is, and this would be my fourth point, you know, I feel like, and then this goes back to before I was on here, is I feel like people have said something. There was an agreement before the board, this is before I was on. And I just think it, you know, it's important to say, hey, we all agreed on this, so let's not do it anymore. I think there needs to be more civility here. I really do. Not so much at the meetings, but even outside of the meetings. And I will admit that sometimes I probably had a problem with that. So I'll leave it at that, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Winnicky. I too yearn for the time when we can connect ourselves with civility and professionally and get back to being a board that does not include this kind of negativity. We, none of us want to be discussing this, this topic. This topic has been going on for very, many months. And to be honest, you know, to be truthful, that, the list was three pages long to begin with, the list of infractions, which included much more that was in, than, that was in that statement. That statement was crafted by attorney Forte. That statement was, that list and that statement has been, has been compiled over months with contributions by our administrator, our attorney, our president, some board members. You know, the infractions have been notified, have the person, the board member that has, you know, that committed them, has been put on notice, has been retrained, has been told to please stop doing this, and that, that trustee has decided that they don't need to. And as, as we've heard tonight, they're not bound to that in, in their mind. The thing that, that bothers me a little, though, is that this classic defense and deflection technique where the person who, and I'll expand on, on one of the things about the threats to the, to the, and I'll call them threats, that's exactly what they were, to, to two village staff members, threatening not only their positions here, but their careers, going to the point where, where potentially libel and slanderous activities. Threatening their careers and their livelihood is, is, is a personal attack. So to have somebody here claiming they're the victim of personal attacks when they're actually the ones that are making them, I'm sorry, that, that's just classic deflection and reversal. We don't want to get into the specifics. We, we wanted this to be more of, look, we, this is going on for a while. We really just expect civility, we expect candor, we expect professionalism. Let's just get back to doing that and, and put this behind us. Censure really means nothing. There, there's, it doesn't stop anybody's ability to speak, ability to participate, ability to contribute. It's just putting somebody on notice that, hey, we've told you a bunch of times, you really shouldn't be doing this. Please stop doing this. That, that's really all it is. So it's been, again, months in, in the coming, that it's been boiled down to the essentials, and we really just want to put this behind us, honestly. But it is warranted. It, this is not a political attack at all. This is not one side versus the other or anything else. This is coming from a, a lot of people that just want this to stop and want us to move on as a professional board.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment more to trustee Botner. I wanted to respond to kind of what you said. You don't, you know, where, where's all this stuff coming from? And, you know, so someone's talking. Well, first of all, you, you just listened to a fellow trustee, to a fellow board member say she doesn't have to keep confidence of closed sessions. I know you've been through the training. That's not what you were taught. That's not what I was taught on multiple occasions. That's not what three separate law firms that I have been a part of on this village have said you're supposed to do. So I guess it's okay with you that one board member can go into a closed session. And if we're talking about litigation, because you brought that up, and we're talking about our side in litigation, that that person then can go and talk to that other person that's in litigation with us? That is insanity. That's wrong. It's morally wrong from my perspective, but it's professionally unbelievable. And I call the question.
Call, question's been called.
Okay. Roll call, please, son.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Mallett is absent. Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Yep. Motion passes. All right, moving on, we'll go to discussion items. 7A, policy manual update regarding PTO update for police officers. And that'll be our administrator Rooney.
Yeah. We have a update to the personnel manual. It, it's a larger document, but the essence of the discussion is revolving around switching to a 12-hour shift in the police department. Necessitates changes to how comp time is earned, holiday bank time. So we made those necessary changes to reflect how we've changed our functioning. So therefore, the benefits that tie back to that, there's some changes. And then that change, if we make it, does necessitate to being in compliance with the state of Illinois's mandate that part-time employees then would get, get benefits. So essentially, the two part-time employees in the, one in the building and zoning department, and the other, the clerk that works the front desk, would end up essentially getting five days vacation a year because they work enough hours to qualify for those benefits. So that would be the main changes, and, and James can answer some of the back and forth that we've done with Michelle Nairman. Don't go, give the Reader's Digest version of that to get compliance, James.
It, it was more housekeeping than anything, to be honest with you. We reviewed everything, our banks, we made some changes that cleared up language. We've actually removed, we had three banks previously, comp, MTO slash PTO, holiday. We removed a holiday bank. So it, it was, it was a lot of housekeeping issues. And then obviously, we went from eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts. So we just wanted to make sure that the difference in the hours, the officers were still being given their entitled time off. So it was more housekeeping in there. It's a lot of verbiage that was changed around. But I'm probably not the person legally to be going, explaining it all to you guys. But it, it was more housekeeping and following law and what had to be said in there, so.
Yeah, and there was stuff that I thought and James thought was simple, turned into a month's worth of back and forth at different times with Michelle to get, get the right intent for our small Department of Policemen. Because there's something as straightforward as the 12-hour shift, we had to make sure we had the comp time right because they, they work every other week, pretty much, where they don't get comp time for going over 80 hours. But it's, it, it's a complicated factor, but it does work out where they're not disadvantaged when they get paid straight time when they're past 80 hours in the 28-day cycle. So there was a lot of inside baseball to this, and we do believe we got it right.
And that is the big difference in it. So that was the agreement, going to 12 hours. Officers would not get overtime until they exceeded 84 hours, which that's common practice, like with 12-hour police departments for the most part. And the officers were fine with that. So that was some of the language. We went from eight-hour shifts, that if you exceeded 40 hours would have been overtime. That's not the case under 12-hour shifts. They have to exceed 84 hours before they'd be eligible for overtime.
So you should have an ordinance on the next meeting's agenda that's a comprehensive, I don't want to say overhaul, but it's a comprehensive list of all the changes that, that have been referred to. We'll likely have a summary prepared between Michelle and myself that'll kind of break down the general aspects of that.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll move on to 7B, ad hoc technology committee becoming a permanent village committee. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Winnicky. I, I would be in full support of this. I think that we've just, although a lot of great work has been done, we've just scratched the surface. I will give credit to trustee Burson for coming up with this idea of us having a technology committee. I think that was a great idea, and obviously to, to Kim Muir, Chairman Muir, and the committee members for all the great work that they've done. I think it needs to continue. There's, there's definitely more work that can be done. And as, as, as Kim pointed out, things continue to change, and we need to stay on top of it.
Good, yeah. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to echo that and request that you consider making it a full-time, permanent committee because there's, technology is fast-changing and with AI, and there's going to be ethical issues that we have to involve in this and keeping of information on data points that tie to personal information and how it's coded and kept. We've got a lot of work to do to stay, to make everybody's information stay private and yet functional to, to operate. So it's going to be an ongoing effort, and I don't think we could ever afford the amount of expertise the private sector folks that are volunteering, their knowledge from the private sector to advise us and help prioritize what to hit first in the budget, too. And, and it really does help a great deal internally with that. And I think it's going to be ongoing, and we're very fortunate to have such a good committee that was put together with the efforts of trustee Burson initially, bringing that to the forefront, so.
Yep, I, go ahead.
I, I also echo the sentiments of both trustee Muncy and administrator Rooney. I would add that outside of the, the straightforward technology aspects of this that the committee is doing such a great job with, that there are other intersections with this that are important that we've not even touched. And so the need, you know, continues, not just because technology continues, but because there are important things that we haven't really even looked at. And one of the ones that comes to mind is records retention. This was another major topic at IML in the last year. The, one of the issues that seems to have developed with the digitization of records over the last several years is that municipalities are tending to keep digital records longer than they should. If it was paper, they would realize that the boxes were piling up, and they would have to do something about it. But because they're digital and you don't see them, then the records tend to accumulate, even though by the various guidelines through which records are supposed to be retained or destroyed, many of them may not be. And so that's an issue that will, you know, require work, not just by our technology people, but, you know, administrative and clerical people that are going through all of this. You know, this will intersect with the clerk, you know, variety of things. So that's a big project. I mean, that, that, that in itself is a, is a 2025 project, if you didn't have any other tech work to do, and I think you still do. So great job, you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, good team, Kim, and we're in good hands. That feels good. Thank you. So any other comments? No? Okay. Well, eight additional items from the president, trustees, or attorney. Anybody? Janet, go ahead.
Bill, the question was called prematurely before, so I have two, two other comments to make. One is that I remind trustee McElvy that I continue to deny violation of closed session confidence, and I don't really understand where those accusations come from. And my statement that you are not allowed to censure a member for it, and then my statements that there's not an ordinance here or a statute against it are not intended to imply, this goes to you as well, that this is a practice that I engage in. I do not. Nonetheless, partly because you keep accusing me of it, it seems important to remind you that the accusation holds no merit, and you are pointing to some sort of invisible rulebook that doesn't exist, which I think goes also to the comments from trustee Muncy in referring to various infractions. Infractions of what? Again, is there some sort of trustee rulebook that, you know, that we're supposed to be following? You know, we received various materials during orientation, which I read, you know, thoroughly and have followed the guidance of those materials. So I'm, I'm, I'm confused and dismayed by this combination of comments. The fact that you folks don't like what I say or do is just not actionable here, and your actions were inappropriate, in my opinion.
Okay, anybody else? Additional comments? No?
I'd like to, one, just comment for discussion. First of all, not quite sure that was appropriate to continue discussion that we had already finalized. So I'd ask the, the parliamentarian of the meeting here to maybe think about that for our future meetings. Let's stick to the, you know, what we're supposed to be talking about. What I would like to talk about and just see if there's a consensus for is I think we should have an ordinance regarding legal fees and the utilization by trustees or others of our village attorney without the express approval of either the president or the administrator. And I would, I would suggest that there should be no utilization of the village attorney without that express approval. And if there were to be, there should be a fine in the ordinance, or that person, whoever it is that utilizes those legal fees without approval, should have to pay the legal fee, whichever is greater. I, the reason I- The reason I say that is because, A, because of things that have happened, we've been a little, a little over our budget this year, so I'd like to rein it back in for the remaining month, and B, we, this has been an issue in the past where we've told people, stop reaching out to the attorney, and unfortunately, in the past, in some cases, that had not stopped. So I know other municipalities have such an ordinance, or I believe they do, I believe I was told that they did, so I would support that, I'm just wondering if other trustees would support us looking into that as well.
Okay. Yeah.
I believe we have such an ordinance.
I'm not sure, but, Tom, go ahead.
I would definitely. I know, I mean, you're available here, what, an hour before? Carmen, is that?
On average.
Yeah. I just think that we shouldn't have that. I mean, I think it should be something that, it should go through some kind of approval phase. I think it's the only way they're going to control legal fees. They're not cheap. I personally, at my job previous, and I owned the company, it took me, hmm, let's see, before I called my lawyer, hmm, it took me a long time to want to pay $7.50 an hour to get a dumb answer. And I'm not saying they're always dumb, but what I'm saying is, it took me a long time to make that phone call. So I usually tried to find every avenue I possibly could before I called my lawyer because it's expensive. So that would be a good thing, I think, if we could do that. If that's be possible to do here, that'd be great. I would support it 100%.
Okay. Yeah, we'll work on that. Administrative, administrator Rooney, you said we, it's in our ordinance.
We do have an ordinance that I'll put, put out to everyone on the legal fee usage. I think it's something that Patsy Smith created due to some conflict early on in the village.
All right. Any other additional comments from trustees or attorney? No? Okay. We have no need for closed session, and motion to adjourn.
So moved, Muncy.
Moved by Muncy, second by McKelvey. All in favor, say aye.